Okay, I'm going to call the board for the season for 14, 1.34. So we're the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, not God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you everybody for attending. My first up to is the consent agenda. I have one addition.
Three or three?
What's that?
Three or three.
Okay, the first one here is six Rivers Lane Conservancy.
I have my order on here.
Okay.
So election supplies, election signs, and then the cash flow part of the address.
Okay.
So J, K, and L.
Okay, J, K, and L?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda?
Oh, J is on there.
Yeah.
J is on there. K is what?
Right on top, yeah. So it'd be K, L, and M.
What's K?
And what are they?
K is election supplies, L is election signs, and M is the park. Sorry.
Okay, any other additions or any other changes? Okay. Does someone like to make a motion with that includes the three agendas, the three agenda additions?
I made a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the changes.
With the three additions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, support to approve the consent agenda with the three agenda items added. Any questions? We'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, old business budget amendments. In front of you, I have some budget amendments here. Any questions on them? You want me to read them off for you?
I just need a minute to look at them.
Okay, no problem.
So Joe?
Yes.
These amounts?
Mm-hmm. Any amounts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you're taking whatever the differences between 1905 and 4341, where is that going? You have to have like the two accounts, where it's coming from and where it goes to.
Okay, right, well, they have that. I have that list on top.
Oh.
Yeah. Oh, I have any changes yet. I'll have to look. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, all right, any other questions on the budget amendments? If there's none, can I get a call?
So.
Okay, we have. Okay, we have support for that. Okay, we have a motion, support to approve the budget amendments. We'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right. Next one, a new business letter from, was it your phrase, Yelch? Yelch?
I think that's.
Okay, fire run, RI 22333. Now, Mr. and Mrs. Yelch, they were saying this fire run was something that was beyond their control, and they're asking if the fire run was fifty dollars, should we waive?
I don't have a problem waiving it. I would rather someone call instead of trying to do it themselves and bother and hurt themselves or.
They're, they're already.
I'll make a motion that we waive the fifty dollar charge for the fire run for Mr. and Mrs. Yelch. Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support to waive the fire run for Mr. and Mrs. Yelch. We'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Pam Blough envoys 101523. It's for nine hundred dollars. This is what are continuing our phase one and phase two oversight.
I make a motion to approve invoice number 101523 to Pam Blough for ninety dollars.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support to pay Pam Blough and incorporate it, invoice number 101523 for nine hundred dollars. We'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, I test, hold for Adobe.
We found in the last month or two, we had quite a few documents that we had to redo because we can't convert it from a PDF to a Microsoft Word. And then if you get the Adobe, the second, it's the second one, right?
It's the second one. I think also the building department might end up having to use it as well.
Is this just for one license deal?
That's for everybody. It's for, and I know it's for everybody. It's for us to use. It's the five hundred twenty-two dollars.
Yeah.
So we can actually.
We actually, today, we had a problem with it.
So we are getting one unit price of three forty-nine, and the other is five twenty-two.
Is it one or the other?
The other one is just to read and only. We don't really need that one. We need the one that we can actually make a doc, take a document and then convert it, convert it, and then make changes to it. Okay.
Okay. So you're making a motion for the, the second one, the AOOL license act of the Pro 2020 M plat?
That's the one you want?
Yes.
The five twenty-two?
Yes.
Then I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to.
A support there.
A motion support to get Adobe writer option for five hundred and twenty-two dollars. We'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay. Doors for the Melvrum Road Hall of Fame.
We need to talk.
Oh, sorry. The front doors, even though they're new, there's something wrong with them because at election day, the one closest to us, it doesn't stay, like, it doesn't stay shut. If it's unlocked, it just flies open.
Well, when we did close it, nobody could.
Right, it's like, it's, because I tried it from the outside. You cannot open it even though it's unlocked.
Yeah. And we get people walking around.
Dave was telling him, he was doing the.
Yeah, we talked to him. He said that it needs like an opener or something.
Yeah.
If he can fix it, I say we let him do it.
You're okay.
As soon as possible. If not, the maintenance.
Yeah, Dave.
Call Richmond Door.
What's that?
Richmond Door or Schweidhoffer Door?
No, Dave has done doors for forty years.
Well, then get it done. We can't have.
If it can't get done by him, then we need it done like as soon as possible.
No.
For our early voting center, we can't have that.
I'll give him a call.
And if he can't fix it, then we need to order new doors. And I say we go through a door company and just have them do it the right way.
Do, these are brand new doors. Is there any warranty on these doors? We don't know.
I mean, I can try to contact the contract guy. The last time I tried to contact him, he.
Nothing. But if Dave or.
Dave.
Dave can't do this, we have two politically good door companies.
Right, I'll try to call, call the contract guy and see if he can.
Yeah, they should, I mean, this is.
I agree. It's like.
There have to be many doors, you know?
Yeah, it's the first thing when Dave was doing the, he was redoing the weather stripping, he goes, who installed it? Not one, right? Okay, all right, auditor contract. We had two, the one from King and King, a current one, and we also got one from Raymond. If we look at the price here that King and King offered us, okay, we're doing a compilation one year. Now, compilation, that's just kind of, that's sort of like a quick check, right? That's on the full blown.
I don't know if it's quick, but it's not like a full blown audit. But he, he suggested we get that done every, if we're only going to do an audit every other year, he suggested doing the compilation for it off years.
So a compilation for 2023, 2024 will be five thousand dollars. The audit from 2024 to 2025 is eight thousand, so it's five thousand, eight thousand. Raymond fees are for 2023, twenty-five thousand, 24, six, twenty-six thousand.
Yeah, we don't have that much money yet.
Yeah. They're basically saying that they're too big for us.
Pretty.
And when I, that audit I did of the local communities, the ones we have King and King really like them. The only problem we had for them, we wish they would explain more, some of the changes. Or that's it, so.
Right.
I was thinking almost we'd do a letter to them, saying, hey, why don't you know, say what else?
I think we just talked to them when, when they come and just, yeah, when they do the adjusting entries, I'm going to say, you have to tell me why you're doing them and what account, so that I don't do that again. Obviously, I put it in the wrong account or whatever, so if you don't tell me, I'm going to do it again.
They don't help in the education of it.
Right, right.
Unfortunately, with BSNA, the tax program, we've never had a problem with it other than if I had a question, I generally go to BSNA rather than Land King.
Right, right.
That's, they're the program creators, and between the county treasurer and BSNA, I can figure it out. So I don't rely on them quite as much as you do, and I just think that it should be explained to you.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we're up to, I guess, make a motion here.
I make a motion. We approve the contract from King and King for the five years, starting April 1st, 2023, through March 31st, 2028, every other year. First year is five thousand, second year, eight thousand, five thousand, eight thousand, five thousand.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion support to accept the King and King contract with the amounts noted. Okay, any questions? We'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay. Resolution point three dash fourteen, authorize use of automated clearinghouse.
So we're running into some trouble with Comcast. They're not getting our payments. We didn't get a bill from them in August. The mail, I don't know what's going on with the mail, but there's, we're, it's like we own them three months and we send checks. So they said we can do an online, yeah, but we don't have any kind of policy or anything, so that's why I brought this to you.
This is good.
Yeah, and then, um, the last, there's four pages to this. The last one is the post audit policy, so that would cover any of the, basically the utilities and the credit card that we can pay it ahead before the board meeting. Like, the credit card, we don't want to incur late fees or interest or anything as we pay it off every month. So we just want to make sure we can get those done in a timely manner. And it would just be like, with Comcast, it'd be easier just to do it online than to send it in the mail and.
I think this is, this is wonderful, and the, our auditors, I'm sure, will go along with this fully.
Yeah.
So I will make a motion to support this resolution, 2023 dash fourteen, resolution to authorize use of automated clearinghouse ACH agreements and electronic transfers of funds. Bring this right up into the 21st century.
There you go.
There you go.
We have support for resolution 23-14.
No support.
Okay, we have motion support to adopt resolution 22, 2023-14, resolution to authorize use of automated clearinghouse arrangements and electronic transactions of funds. We'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, resignation, Gerald Keller resigned from the planning commission. He was also the rep of the planning commission's overall appeals. I need a motion to accept his resignation.
You see, he resigned from the zoning board also.
Well, he was, he was the plan commission rep to the CBA, so when he, he resigned.
He resigned from everything. He resigned from all of the work.
Wasn't quick. Did he give a reason?
Yeah.
Yeah. Watched the, watched the planning commission leaving from last month.
Yeah, and he, but his actions were very improper. So, okay.
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Gerald Keller. I support that.
Okay, we have motion support to accept the resignation of Gerald Keller. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to appoint. A motion carries. Second one, I'd like to appoint Michael Karpinski to the Gasco Township Planning Commission to fill the remainder term of Gerald Keller, starting November 15th, 2023, and ending December 3rd, 2025. Mr. Karpinski approached me, wants me on the Parks and Recs Committee. Since this opening came up, I asked him if he'd be willing to serve on the planning commission. I showed him what planning commission is, and he's lived in, he's a small business owner. He's lived in the township for the last 25 years, and he'd like to get more involved, so. Any questions?
I move that we accept Michael Karpinski as part of the planning commission, starting November 15th, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion to accept Michael Karpinski as part of the planning commission.
I'm supporting.
Okay, we have a motion support. All in favor of having Michael Karpinski in the Gasco Township Planning Commission? I'll say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Right?
Yes.
I'll go with you both.
All right, motion carries. Okay. Next one is aerial imaging. This is a thing highly recommended by our assessor, Shelley. This one is, they get overview flights. This will help an assessor, and it's for a thousand dollars a year. It's a six-year commitment. And our Linda, our assistant principal, I mean, our deputy assessor, she says her chart took a 2017. So I contacted, even though there's a deadline in October, I contacted Justin Sears here, and he said, no, he hadn't even gone to the Board of Commissioners to get permission to fill this, I think. So, but both Shelley and Linda say this would, here would help them out immensely. Any questions?
So is this something that we're basically like sharing with the whole county for like splitting the cost amongst everybody?
That's what makes it affordable.
Yeah. Have we done this aerial?
We have, yeah. This is just an update and an enhancement. And because of the service, they're asking us to kick in a thousand dollars along with the other. It just makes it affordable to everyone, and it is invaluable to us.
Don't we pay like every year for part of this, just not the aerial?
Mm-hmm. So it's another proposed service agreement, and it's, like you say, it helps the assessor's office and gives us aerial views of everything. And people want to come in, they can, you know, they can check it out themselves.
Oh, there's a public, can we put that on the website?
I'm not sure if we can or not.
Okay.
But if we have it here, then we can share it.
I make a motion that we approve the proposed county provided service agreement for, oh, what do we want to call this? Assessing, what should we call this?
Proposed county, yeah.
Aerial? It's, it's more than just that, though.
Yeah, proposed county provided service agreement.
Yeah.
For land maps and parcel reuse, aerial use. While, while, while in.
Okay, we have a motion to accept this.
Yeah.
Thousand dollars for.
For six years.
For six years.
Starting, is this starting next year?
2024.
Twenty-four.
Oh. And they're, they're guaranteeing two flights, which means updates. So I guess, I guess it starts in 2024.
Okay, any support for this?
I support.
Okay, we have motion support to approve that, go on, the aerial imaging and the other associated thing for a thousand dollars per year for a six-year commit. We'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay. Pay increase for busy bee cleaning. A new, a new cleaner, Deb Ward, she started out, she gave us a deal, what was it, 40% below our.
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent. She didn't, she didn't look to see what it is, and it's only, she's doing this for, what, $60? She does excellent work, and I'm not, so I, I would like to increase her pay.
How much?
Well, we paid the last one seventy-five. I would say, I'd say eighty.
What do you think?
We can start out at eighty.
Yeah. Okay. I'm making a motion.
I'll increase her pay, eighty dollars.
Yeah, also to, one thing, I'd like to make a retroactive from when she started.
Okay.
Okay, all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do, we will, we will review that when she is asked to clean this room on various occasions.
Do you know how long it takes?
She's here like an hour and a half, I think. The previous people were here for a half an hour.
Mm-hmm.
And they did not.
She, she's cleaned the floor up here and.
This needs to be, and the bathrooms need to be cleaned up here as well at various times, you know?
Well, I think we have in the, in the contract that we have to make stuff here every week.
Yeah.
That brings her own stuff and everything?
Yeah. She's just over, she's just over in Sinclair. Very nice lady. Very nice. That's it.
A little side, side.
Okay. Okay. All right.
So we'll need support.
Okay.
Who needs support?
I'm supporting.
Okay, so we have motion support to, to have pay increase for busy bee cleaning, the eighty dollars for cleaning, and make that retroactive from when she began. We'll call vote.
Can I, um, tell them that I can pay that like right away, because I haven't paid her anything yet?
Yeah, she was asking about, she was here earlier tonight.
Okay, yeah.
So.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Election materials?
Okay, so these are two separate line items, but they're, I will just explain them at the same time. So for the early voting centers.
Oh, they're two different.
Okay, so for the early voting centers, we have to get some supplies. They will be hopefully reimbursed by the state, but I wanted to get approval before I ordered them, just in case something goes wrong with that, because they're giving everybody, you know, tabulators, laptops, vats, so we don't know how much funding is going to be left, and that's for the whole state, so. But we are going to need all of this stuff to run the early, early voting centers that are now wired by law.
That's like a hundred and seventy-three dollars?
Yes, and I did put in the last sheet with the shipping, so you guys can see how crazy their shipping prices are, but that's just, isn't that outrageous?
Yes.
And the stuff is not that heavy. So I don't understand why it's so much.
So how much this is, eight seventy-three oh four plus whatever?
Well, the other one is a, is a separate line item.
Okay.
The signs are a separate line item.
Okay.
So we have to do it separately.
All right.
So, yeah, but we're supposed to get reimbursed by the state for all of this stuff. We might have to wait a year for it, but.
All right. Okay, what are the questions you have on that? When did you total all the equipment, eight seventy?
This one is eight, it's eight seventy-three oh four.
Okay, that's for the equipment?
That's for this, yeah.
Okay. All right, okay, we have a motion.
Make a motion to pay eight seventy-three oh four for election supplies. Support that we could be reimbursed by the state.
We have motion support to pay eight seventy-three oh four for the election supplies to be reimbursed by the state. Any questions? We'll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Motion carries. And the next one is a sign.
The next one is the same thing. We're supposed to be reimbursed by the state for them, but we're going to get sort of like a big sandwich size, so I'm going to get four of them. What am I going to say? Okay, about there. One that says vote here precinct one, one that says vote here precinct two, a handicap, a handicap insurance sign, an early voting year sign. And it was, I don't think that was too bad of a price for, for each one. It's two hundred and, I think it's at two oh nine for each one.
Yeah, they're pretty tall.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Eight sixty for each other?
Yeah.
Oh, eight thirty-six.
Eight thirty-six.
Because we got the cheap ones, and the wires keep, the ground's too. Because we got the cheap ones, and the wires keep, the ground's too hard. A lot of our wires, try to give them in.
In February, we were trying to put those in.
Yeah, that doesn't work.
And a lot of times, people can't see those signs until they're like right there, and then with the bigger signs, they'll be able to see better.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion to purchase these signs?
I'll make a motion to purchase four signs for, for me, for a total of eight hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Okay, any support?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion to support to purchase the voting signs for the eight hundred dollars?
Eight thirty-six.
Eight thirty-six, okay. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Deen, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stone, yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Our last meeting, I told you that we approached by Six Rivers Land Conservancy about the possible obtaining the Cornwall property that's adjacent, east, adjacent to the park, 26 acres. I've been working with Brian Marsloff, he's their land coordinator, acquisition manager. Him and I, we went out, we didn't go on the park, we just walked on our park property. He was very enthusiastic. He says, but, but this, but it's how we purchased the park before. Six Rivers would buy it to get it off the market. We, well, we first entered into a agreement. And we would apply for a DNR trust fund acquisition grant to get it, so seventy-five, twenty-five percent match.
Do we know how much the property is?
Well, the property's a lot. However, yeah, I contacted, we got a hold, I got a hold of the realtor. He himself said the property was overly, it was like over eight hundred thousand. I put him in touch with Brian here, Brian, they're starting, and Brian, him and I talked today for a while. He says that's normal. And of course, the realtor said, well, there's someone else interested. And he said, well, he hears that all the time. I told him, we're interested, but since this was only in your hand yesterday, I want to give you guys time to think about, read it over. He said, we could wait till the next one, but he says, if there really is someone else, he'll call me, we can, you know, have a special meeting. He says, we would score very high on the trust fund grant, because one, it's next to exist in property. Two, it's in a river plain area. And I told him about the long-range plans where they hope to have a water trail from Memphis to Marine City along Bell River. And that other group, they would like to have a trail connecting the McComb Orchard to the Bridge Bay Trail, and complete the coast-to-coast trail in Michigan. And when I told him that, he says, you've got to put that in a grant, that will give you big-time points, and I get it. It's beautiful property. I'm going to try to get a hold of the Cornwall family so we could watch it. The realtor didn't have, contacted the family, I don't want to go on that without permission. But look it over, think about it. It's, I think it's a wonderful opportunity, okay?
So it's one of them, okay?
Yeah. So, and if we have to pull the trigger to go early before the next meeting, I'll let you know, we'll have a special meeting, but hopefully we'll, so. Okay. All right, any questions, everyone? Okay, we're up to citizens comments. Any resident would like to make, any comments for that?
You know, Nick Reber, forty-eight, forty-eight, Melton. Last month, we talked about the park, this is pertaining to the park with the extra fees and all that. Didn't they ever come with that?
What extra fees?
They wanted the.
Six hundred.
Yeah, we're going to do the compact.
No, yeah, no, they, that was going to be, there, I talked to them, and our park planner said they could substitute other kind of stone in there, so that what board contracting's been doing.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, any other questions? Okay. If there's none, we'll go to board comments.
I have two things for your consideration. One is, I, I put in front of you the correspondence with Monsieur Bojois with, I'm putting my fingers on Comcast. I'm trying, he's a supervisor. He's, he's one of the many, many, many people that work in their land management, he's supervisor. My thought is, if we could lease property directly across the street from the township. He's.
From the gas.
From the gas company, which they do all the time, all over the state. I would like to, and he's, he's thinking it would cost us between maybe twelve and eighteen hundred dollars a year to lease it. We would clear it, gravel it, temporarily light it, I'm not, I'm not going to light it.
Not permanent.
But it would be safe parking for township board meetings and voting. This parking on the street is not safe for our reasons. People coming in between cars, the dark.
Culvert?
Yes.
They would have no problem with culverts in there, because that would be the big thing?
Well, no, if a culvert is needed, then we would, then he would know about that, we would work with the road commission, get a drive in there so we could, we could access it either on Lindsay or Melton, whatever the road commission says is, is the quickest, most safe thing to do. And he's looking into this now. For him, there's a lot of hoops to jump through, this land management thing. But they're, they are always very interested in partnering with communities, or, he even said, well, don't you need a park? No, actually, maybe have a park. You just need a little bit of extra parking, maybe just a lot across the street. So I only began talking to him because he's, he's working on, working on it with his end. I just wanted to let you know that that's in the works.
Thank you.
The other thing that I want you to consider, and we've talked about this before, a sale of property. I'm talking about the property that we own, a vacant lot on Adair Road, paved road, it's all wooded. We have had dealings with this before because the people who live next door to it, the Francis', needed a bit of easement, they needed an easement on our property for a culvert or septic tank or something like that. So it's already, it's already been brought to the attention of our legal staff. Christine Anderson has worked on this when Patty Allegreen was in office. And this is property that we are not going to use for any particular reason. It is perhaps five acres. It would be a nice sale. We acquired this money through a fish kill fund, and it has to be used for parks property. So if we sold it, that money would have to go back into Parks and Rec for the upkeep of our parks. But what we are going to do with a five to eight acre parcel on St. Clair Highway, I'm really not sure. So look in, think about this, and if you're interested in, we can get a hold of Ms. Anderson and see if the, I'm sure the easement still holds, and perhaps in December or January, there's no rush on this, we could consider the sale of this property on St. Clair Highway. It's in, I believe, in the East China School District on a paved road, that gives it a lot of value. I don't know what the value is for us to keep such a small parcel of property. It was once considered, if we were going to put the township hall on a, on a paved piece, but we sold the lot next to it. So just, you know, put that in the back of your mind, and if anything else comes of it, I'll let you know.
Yeah, and it wouldn't help, it wouldn't hurt having that funds from that.
No, it wouldn't, no. It wouldn't hurt at all.
Okay, anyone else has any comments?
In the packet is this MTA fall meeting. If anybody wants to go to that, let me know, and I will.
Yeah, I'm ready, I'll answer.
You do want to go, okay, anybody else? I'll let her know that you're coming, and we'll give you five dollars out of petty cash, right? You're not going to do a job for five months.
Right, any other opinions? Okay. Progress on the park. Right now, this weekend, the subcontractor is pouring sidewalks, eighty parking places and the pads for the pavilion, the Porta John at the parks are doing that. The entrance, there's a bit of discrepancy between the designer and the county permit section. And first, when they designed it, it was designed like only for twenty-five cars. Well, the permit section says, well, since they, we doubled the two, we had phase one, phase two together, it's more than twenty-five cars, which requires curbing along there in a bigger culvert. It's funny, because in St. Clair County, they go from low uses twenty-five cars or less, and medium use is five hundred cars or less. I told them, hey, let's see what large is. We're going to see if there's a compromise, but David Like, who works for Pam Blough, says if we do the upgraded one, we'll be set for years, where we go, we expand the park for then. So he hasn't got any pricing for it, but I'll bring it to it. It was a miscommunication between the design staff in St. Clair County and not knowing some expectations. But the park is going along there, it's progressing. Matter of fact, on Saturday, this Saturday, at ten o'clock AM, we're going to have a groundbreaking presentation, but we have two members, our park director advisory, Debbie and Gina there. So what we're going to do, even though ground has been broken at the park, we're going to, it's a bit of time, we're going to have Channel Six there, come on out.
Come on.
And we're going to just do a little bit of presentation part, show the public what's going on, maybe take them down to the river, and just show, like, the plans of that and the great uses. Whenever we showed the park, like at Brian Marsloff there a couple weeks ago, he says that's fantastic property. Our grant coordinator, when she was like, almost, she wasn't that young, she was pregnant, she hiked the park, she said it was fantastic property.
Wow.
So everyone's very enthusiastic. Back in September, we had that bat hike there, it went very well, natural south Six Rivers. And when we, when the park gets more completed, we want to do an astronomy night out there.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's going to be a lot of good stuff out there. Very thick. It was a little cool the night of the bat watching, we saw some bats, but then they kind of settled down, so the night was nice and clear, so we did impromptu astronomy lessons there.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is there any update on park benches?
I haven't heard anything.
Nobody's heard anything?
So, yep. And I have, any question on the parks? Okay. One last thing is, oh, no, two things. Board of Commissioners are with funds. I talked to Commissioner Rushing to see where we're at. We're going to get about a hundred, he was saying about a hundred and sixty-four thousand. He's very specific where we could use these funds, and it's going to be on road projects. He was saying that the road commission officer is going to send a list. I suspect it's going to be the culverts over the county drains. But he said, he's worked with Bill Hazleton, the director of road commission, see what we want, because I would like to knock those out. If we can get those paid for through that, replace culverts like that, those last for decades, and they'll free up money from the general funds, so we don't have to do that. So I'll be coordinating with them. Okay, all addition. Okay. Our architect said we should have construction drawn within two to three weeks, then we could put out for bids. Hopefully by the December meeting, we'll have bids, so we could do our addition, have another ADA complaint from Building Precinct, and plus, just to make our flow, I know the building department is.
We're more a storage room than we are.
Luckily Brenda and Katie are very, work well together.
So do you want to talk about the, I feel Lindsay, just to look at an update.
Yeah, we, the individuals who are living on the barn in Lindsay Road have vacated there. There's still a camper in one of the barns, our ordinance enforcement officer told the owner of the property, he'll, they'll give him a month to get it out of there. There's a generator that was going, she has a chicken operation in one of the barns, she's raising chickens. She said, he said that that generator, even though it's ag area, so chicken operations, fine, but to put the generator in an enclosure, so it cuts down on the noise. And our ordinance enforcement officer has been keeping the neighbors up to date every second. Okay, any other? Okay, if none, we're up to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to support to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Blue Water Fallen Heroes Community Banner Program is in need of these fallen hero photos in the Casco area. If you have a photo, please contact 810-434-6407 or email WEICHSLER10@gmail.com.